Okay, we will call to order the July 20th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. First item on our agenda is roll call.
Commissioner Height.
President.
Commissioner Teta.
Here.
Commissioner Pollan.
Here.
Commissioner Sharnick.
Here.
Commissioner Goldberg.
Here.
Commissioner Flague.
Here.
And it looks like our council member, Bonnie Finley, is absent. Okay, all right. Any communications from Don Burchett, Principal Planner?
None.
None, okay. This is a public hearing. We're at the public invited to be heard section of our meeting. If there's somebody in the audience who would like to speak about something that is not on tonight's agenda, please come forward. I see one person in the audience who could be a potential speaker. Nobody signed up. We will close the public invited to be heard. Next is approval of our minutes for June 22. Anybody who is in attendance at the meeting wish to...
I move that we approve the June 22, 2016 minutes.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Bruno. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes, so we have approved our minutes. And the next item is number six, Bootstrap Brewing Variance with Senior Planner Eva Pereshevsky.
Thank you, Chair Sharnick and Commissioners Eva Pereshevsky, Senior Planner, Planning and Development Services. This is the Bootstrap Brewing Variance from Residential Protection Standards. Sorry, getting a little feedback there. I just, we'll just start, we'll go in through the, again, the project location is at 142 South Pratt Street. It's this triangular shaped parcel here over by, this is the South Pratt Parkway Bridge over here, this is Pratt Street, and this is Second Avenue up on the north. Let me just orient you here. And so, the property is developed right now with a 14,000 square foot warehouse building that Times Call used to be in this building. And the applicants wish to move into this building and do a microbrewery with a tasting room. These uses are permitted by right in this zone, which is zoned mixed industrial. And the reason we're here tonight is because the, all micro, all breweries with or without tasting rooms have to be within 250 feet of a residential zone. And over here is mixed industrial, this is mixed industrial, and in fact, it's mixed industrial on half of the block here on Second Avenue. I'm sorry, I got cut off. Go back to the previous slide. Sorry, let's go back here. So this is mixed industrial, and this is industrial, and the half a block here is actually a commercial CBD zone, which would not be subject to the restrictions. So it's really this half a block here on Pratt Street that's subject to the variance. And so, the applicants are working with the Development Review Committee on a, we call it site plan waiver, it's a type of zoning approval for this process. And some of the things that we had asked for was, sorry, my mouse is not working great, there are two curb cuts here on Pratt Street, and staff has asked the applicants to close off this north one because currently it doesn't meet city standards, you can't have this close of a curb cut to an intersection, so the applicants have agreed to close that off, and they will be putting bike racks over here. So the accesses to the property will be one access here on South Pratt Street, and then one over here on Second Avenue that's existing. They are going to add 32 parking spaces, two of which are handicap stalls. Those will all be striped out around here and some down here. And then, they plan to have a 2,400 square foot tasting room inside. No, it's in the patio, right? Partially in the patio.
Inside.
It's gonna be inside, yeah, so there's gonna be a tasting room inside. There's a, as you can see from the aerial, there is a, sort of a roof overhang here, this will be their patio area. They plan on having their loading docks and also food trucks here to serve with their So again, kind of went through this. The zoning allows it by right, however, we have the residential protection standard, and again, the RMD zone is across the street for at least half the block. So what I did here was I made you a buffer. This shaded area represents a 250 feet out from the subject property, which is right here, this triangle lot. And again, it's, it's these four properties here, because this half a block only is zoned residential. This half of the block is zoned commercial, and everything around it is zoned industrial, so they would not be subject to this variance. So we're talking about four properties. So we reviewed the review criteria for variances, and in your staff report, we've gone through each review criteria and found that this could be approved, or we recommend approval of it. Again, this application, the brewing company, is consistent with our comp plan, it's in an industrial zone, and it's an allowed use. Some of the review criteria don't necessarily totally apply because it's not a brand new development. But for example, meet city street and infrastructure design, while the applicants have agreed to close off one of the driveways to meet our city design standards for streets, is this consistent with the intent of the zoning, and is it compatible with the neighborhood? We concur that it is. It is in the industrial zone. There are four affected properties. We've had a neighborhood meeting, we've had, we've sent out notice of application, and then we've sent public hearing notice. So those neighbors have been notified on three separate occasions. Staff have not received any complaints or concerns raised from those four homes that would be impacted. And so, again, no adverse impacts to utilities, the, it's a warehouse building, it's already got the utilities and infrastructure, and the microbrewery company would not be making it more impacted. There's an appropriate transportation plan, again, they've closed off the curb cut, there's two points of access, there'll be bike parking, bike racks. The special circumstances that are unique to this property, that don't apply to other MI properties, is that there are, because of where it's located and because it touches some of those, those four lots to the north, it could be a hardship because there are many uses in our use matrix that would not allow anyone within 250 feet of residential, so that, it'd be tough to utilize that property. And then the last one is, the variance is not a self-imposed hardship, will not create a safety hazard, and is the least deviation that will afford relief. And Leslie and Steve Kazouz are here from Bootstrap Brewing. They don't have a formal presentation tonight, it's pretty straightforward, but they are here to answer any questions you have. And with that, happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Eva. Were there any questions for Eva at this time? Commissioner Height.
Of course. Eva, you had a fantastic map that showed the buffer zones, could you throw that back up, please? I'm somewhat familiar with this area, and the properties, I believe, immediately to the west and on the corner, I think, of Second and Pratt, but at the southwest corner there, I think maybe automotive repair facilities, do you know if that's true or not?
Yes, Commissioner Height, that there is an automotive repair facility to the west.
And I know too, that automotive repair facilities, especially if they have outdoor activities, also have to be within 250 or 500 feet away from residential areas. And do you know whether or not those facilities have such a variance, or are they grandfathered in?
Yes, Commissioner Height, I actually remember signing off on that zoning approval about eight years ago, it was one of my first projects here, and it was actually grandfathered because it had been auto repair for many years prior.
Before the zoning was done. And then, across the street in the northwest corner, are those residential lots? You say they're zoned commercial?
Yes, Commissioner Height, those are all zoned, although there are, they are developed with single-family homes that are obviously very old, over 100 years old, they're zoned mixed industrial. So our zoning code says very specifically that this residential protection distance is only for residentially zoned properties, and it says, this excludes any residential homes in a non-residential zone.
So this half block of these four houses that we're focused on, that, how big is that residential zone? What is that residential zone? And do you know how it turned out to be a seemingly orphaned zone in this area?
Off the top of my head, Commissioner Height, I don't have a zoning map handy. I know that half a block extends north, but just on that half of the block. And the other half is Commercial Business District, and the CBD runs east. Then it's mixed industrial on both sides of Second Avenue.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Flague.
I stand corrected, I'm sorry, Commissioner Height, my apologies. Actually, it hits these two lots as well, these are also, I apologize, I thought those were MI zoned lots. These are MI zoned lots all in here. These are, so it would also affect these two lots. Again, we hadn't heard from any, any neighbors with any concerns about the facility.
There are six, maybe seven lots that are impacted by this. They're within the zone.
Six lots, correct.
And are you measuring, so I'm sure too, from the lot line or from the building line?
Commissioner Height, we take it from the lot line, because that's the only way we can with this particular measuring tool.
Commissioner Flague.
Just wanted to reemphasize that this is an existing structure that they're using, and they don't plan to expand the patio area anywhere's north of where it is now.
That's correct. Thank you. Commissioner Goldberg.
Hey Eva, when you guys are doing the calculation of the buffer, do you, or do you not include the right-of-way?
Commissioner Goldberg, we do include the right-of-way, because we have no way of excluding it when we, when we do this mapping system.
I'm sorry if it was in the packet, like, but can you give us an idea of what is the distance, including the right-of-way, to the nearest properties from the property line of the proposed project?
So what is, you're asking, what is the distance from here to here?
Exactly.
I don't, I, it's probably around 100 feet, it's the width of the right-of-way.
Yeah, thanks.
Commissioner Teta.
Eva, I'm presuming a restaurant with a liquor license doesn't, isn't subject to the same 250-foot buffer? And if it isn't, any idea why?
Commissioner Teta, that's a good question. No, if this were, for example, just a restaurant with an alcohol license application, they would not have to seek this request. And that's because, I think it was 1994, City Council approved an ordinance that exempted restaurants from alcohol distance buffers, subject in this residential protection zone. So they would not, any, if it was a restaurant, they would, we would not be here tonight.
Commissioner Bruno.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, this may be a question for the owners, but are there any plans for the rooftop on this at all, or is it just gonna basically be exactly what it, what it is now?
Exactly what you see.
Okay.
There's no modification to it.
Actually, could we have you step to the podium, introduce yourself, give your name and address, and then restate your answer?
Yeah, I'm Steve Kazouz. I didn't know you were that short, or that tall. Steve Kazouz with Bootstrap Brewing, 6778 North 79th Street in Niwot, Colorado. There's no plans to make any modification to the, to the roof, so there's not gonna be any patio seating up there or anything like that.
Mr. Kazouz, while, while you're there, where will the trucks that will be making deliveries be coming in? Which driveway would they permanently be using?
Can you, you had a, oh, go ahead. The one where you showed the docks, yeah.
That one, right?
Yep. And, so, here are the dock doors, and we're gonna block off, like Eva said, this entrance, and we'll leave this entrance here. So they'll, good question on whether they're coming down Second Avenue or what, but here's the entrance straight into the dock doors.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Any further questions before we open this up to the public? Commissioner Height.
Mr. Kazouz, I have another question for you.
Sure.
Your food trucks, what's your, what's your intention for that operation?
That'll be something that we might or might not do. If we do it, it'll be food trucks to serve the patio and people inside, typical of what other breweries are doing. I would anticipate that that would be a once or maybe twice a week opportunity. Our current location, we don't use food trucks, and maybe, we may elect not to have food trucks here, but I would say maybe once or twice a week. Yep.
Commissioner Goldberg.
Hey Eva, the question came up about whether if this was a restaurant, we would be in a similar situation. Is the reason why we're here because of the alcohol component to, to the project, or that it's industry and kind of manufacturing near residential?
Commissioner Goldberg, this is, there's a section in our code in the Residential Protection Standards, it says breweries with or without tasting rooms. So any brewery that were to try and move here would have to go through this process.
And you think the spirit of that is relating to the alcohol being manufactured there, or the traffic and, you know, trucks coming and going?
I guess, Commissioner Goldberg, I think it'd be all of the above and other potential nuisances, such as odor, noise from, you know, customers, that type of thing.
Eva.
Yeah, Commissioner Pollan.
Have we come across this with any of the other breweries? I'm thinking, I tried thinking about where some of them are, and I can't think of any that have the immediate, but I'm looking at Whibby and 300 Sun, and aren't they gonna be running across basically the same thing?
Good question, Commissioner Pollan. No, they, when we buffered those out, they were not within 250 feet of residential zones. Most of these guys that have been coming through have been coming straight through to building permit because they didn't run into this unique situation of being within 250 feet of a residential zone.
Commissioner Teta.
But Tasty Weasel, I would guess, would have had to have had one, right? It's on left hand and sunset?
Yeah, just consulting with Don, it looks like that, that was grandfathered in, so...
Any further questions? This is a public hearing item, and so we need to give the public a chance to speak. Nobody has signed up. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this issue? Please come forward if you would. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing on this, and we will go back to discussion and questions amongst the commission.
I, yeah, I'm really struggling to figure out why a brewery and a tasting room would have more impact on residents than a full-blown restaurant would. I'm sure I could ask Steve and Leslie, but I'm guessing the hours of operation, seven days a week are like three to nine, it, there's a maximum, Josh, you would know, what the allowable in a tasting room is.
Actually, it's gonna, let's, let's ask that question of Eva, rather than relying on the...
Right, I was gonna suggest that we ask that to the applicant.
...of the commissioner. So maybe Eva can tell us what, what the general operating hours are.
Yes, and their site plan waiver application, it says their hours of operation are 12 noon to 10 p.m. Monday through Sunday.
Okay. Commissioner Bruno.
Yeah, I mean, just my two cents worth, I feel like this area in particular, and you can pretty much see it by the picture, but as far as the comprehensive plan goes, I mean, I think this is very typical of the type of area that could benefit from revitalization, repurposing, that sort of thing. I also agree with the, the restaurant point, you know, I, I also look at some of the other commercial properties around here that I don't feel like would be, you know, the auto mechanics and things like that, as far as traffic and noise go and everything, I just don't see a, personally, I just don't see any reason to, to not grant the variance.
Okay. I had a question for Eva, I'll try to remember it, let somebody else chime in with other comments. Commissioner Teta.
I have a question for Steve or Leslie. The, I don't know how you measure it, but the, the amount of production that you do, that you export, that gets picked up and trucked elsewhere, what kind of volume are we talking about these days?
Volume or frequency of trucks coming through, I, right now, we're looking at one to twice a week. That could go up. I mean, right now, it's one a week at our place. I don't know that we'll ever get to the point that, whatever Left Hand's doing, or anybody else, or Oscar Blues, but I would anticipate that we start with one to two truckloads a week, and grow on from there, and it could be one per day.
If it wouldn't be too embarrassing, I think it would be a good comparison to, to draw between Left Hand and Bootstrap, just to put it in perspective, the, the size of the operation, maybe?
Sure, I'll, I'll tell you that last year, we did 1,400 barrels, and I'm not gonna put words in your mouth, Josh, but I, 50,000, 60,000, 70,000 barrels. Let, Oscar Blues is 100,000.
Gotcha. Okay. Any other, hit your mic there, Chris. Commissioner Flague.
Eva, this question is regarding, I'm assuming that normal parking lot standards with landscaping will be part of what will go in and improve the site?
I guess, Commissioner Flague, we actually don't have minimum parking standards now, we have maximum parking standards, and the applicants meet the standard.
I guess I was referring to the appearance rather than the space number. But there would be additional landscaping?
We can, you can certainly add that as a condition. Now, this is not, just to, we understand, this is not a full site plan review, it's not a new development, it's moving into an older building. They are making some improvements, and so, with a site plan waiver, they're not doing site plan review, we typically, we try and have everyone bring everything up to standard as much as they can, and make the improvements, and if you'd like to add a condition about the landscaping, we can certainly, you know, you can bring that in your motion.
Eva, I did remember my question. You're suggesting to us that we go for PZR 2016-15B with conditions. What are the conditions that the staff is, is looking for?
Chair Sharnick, the main one is that, again, we had just talked about it, but, and also, I wrote this report before things were resubmitted, about this a while ago, but they had, initially had submitted a, their plan there to leave the two accesses, accesses on Pratt open, and our engineers had asked that they close it. They have since, since I wrote the report, have agreed to do that, but that, for example, is one of the conditions of approval.
Okay. And then, they also, the drawing that was in our packet is not going to be the final drawing that'll be submitted, right?
Uh, it's, it's more or less the final packet. The one you received, did you, did your packet show it being closed off on Pratt Street?
Actually, I'm, this may seem picky, but there's no north arrow on it, and, and the drawing is orientated such that, that north is to the left, so I'd like to see the drawing redone, so that it's clear as to, because your, your report mentioned that the south driveway would be closed, but the driveways are on the west, but you actually meant the south, one of the two on the west, so we need that clarified in our drawing, if that's the final drawing.
Okay.
Okay, so, Commissioner Height.
Yeah, I have kind of a broader question, it's gonna go to you, Don, maybe Eva, if you can help too. So, when I look at the variance standards in 15, 2.50J5, as quoted in our packet, there's reference to the fact that the quasi-judicial body needs to find, excuse me, that there are special circumstances, and the special circumstances, the way I'm reading it, appear to be describing physical characteristics of the property. And Eva, excuse me again, Eva, what I'm seeing is identification of special characteristics with respect to this particular project, is that the property, though not particularly unique in and of itself, other than its triangular in shape, is special because it's on the dang corner of the zoning district, and it abuts another conflicting zoning district. So my question, maybe to Don, is have we considered just the fact that a property's at the edge of a zoning district to be a special circumstance, as opposed to a unique quality, narrowness, steepness, other topographical aspects of a piece of property that warrant a zoning variance, as opposed to the fact that it abuts another zoning district, which, as I read the Residential Zoning Setback Standards, exists specifically to create a buffer to protect residential zones, and create a transmissible zone between, and there's a whole list of activities that are deemed statutorily require any buffer between residential zones. So, again, more broadly, do we look at special circumstances as required to be found in a variance package to be the fact that a piece of property's at the edge of a zoning district?
Chairman Sharnick, Commissioner Height, Don Burchett. So there's a, there's a couple things that I'd like to maybe give a little background on and maybe explain, because I think it, it could add some clarity to the, the project here. So, the first question that Commissioner Height brought up is about the review criteria for the variance itself. And in our code, there's number five, which talks about the review criteria, the additional review criteria for variances. And you have, again, you have this special circumstances that are exceptional to it, and then, under it, there's a Roman numeral one, which is special circumstances include that are not limited to, and that gets into the exceptional narrowness, shape of the lot, some other kind of physical problem with the property that restricts somebody from being able to meet the requirements in the code. So, the textbook example is that you buy a lot that has a valley right down the middle of it, because we were poor planners and put the property lines on each side of that valley, and you can't put your house in the valley, you want to put it up on the side of the valley, so you can't meet the setbacks. The, the way the lot is encumbered, you just cannot meet the requirements. That's a special circumstance, okay? Now, in Longmont, we also have Roman numeral two, which is, as it was, has been interpreted through us, is that there are two ways you can meet special circumstances. One is with this shallowness, narrowness, shape of the piece of property, or number two, which is in determining practical difficulty, the decision-making body shall consider the following factors, which is this A through F that are in parents. So, when you're looking at this, and when we're looking at this and explaining this, not only for this commission, but also for the Board of Adjustment, there's two ways you can make a finding. One is because there is some uniqueness to the property that's causing the variance to be needed, or the other is that there are other extenuating circumstances that can be considered. And so, as you go through those additional ones under Roman numeral two, you get into what I would say are more broadly worded descriptions, that you could make a finding that the exception of the variance is justified based on a finding that A through F are met. And one of the exam, you know, the, and to read a couple of these to you, is that the degree to which the variance deviates from other, from the otherwise applicable standard, in other words, is 100 feet in this case enough in this situation and for this location to the residential properties to the north? Is that, does having a truck... properties to the north, is that, does having a truck route on Second Avenue that services all of this side of town, a hundred feet of right of way, and the outside entertainment area being another forty feet away, does that mitigate it enough to where you feel that the variance is justified? Is it, is it an alternative means or methods of meeting the requirement? And that's the way that we typically look at these, because the Roman numeral one, the exceptional shape, or size, or narrowness, rarely comes into play in Longmont. It, it rarely does. It is almost always driven by Roman numeral two and a finding that the other review criteria have been met. So, is the location of this in proximity to a district a reason that you could find? You could. You could also believe that there are other reasons that warrant the variance to be approved. And I would also say, Commissioner Height, that I think your read of the, uh, residential protection standards is one way that we as staff originally believed that the code was meant to be interpreted, which was, if you are within two hundred and fifty feet of a residential area, originally, we believed that you were not even allowed to apply to go onto those properties. But then, through discussion and, and meetings, what we came back with from the people that helped put these standards together was that, no, the, the intent was that, while the preference is to keep them two hundred and fifty feet away, if there are circumstances or ways that people can mitigate the impacts that are believed to be associated with these uses, that you could let somebody get closer than that distance. And an example that I would point to, that this commission looked at a number of years ago, was the Modela Wine Bar, when it was going up at Fox Creek, uh, Pace and Seventeenth Avenue. The residential zone was a detention pond directly behind a eight-foot-tall concrete block wall. The nearest home that was zoned residential was about two hundred and twenty-five feet, didn't meet the two fifty, but the residential zone and the variance we were giving was zero. So, I mean, we were given a full hundred percent variance to this project. Planning Commission reviewed it and said, "Look, you know, we believe we can grant it, finding under Roman numeral two, that there's other unique conditions or other factors that we can take into, um, into evidence and make a finding that we believe that it meets it." And so that's how we have presented these typically as staff to you guys, and so that's how we have, you know, done it in, in the past. Again, no variance ever sets a precedent for another variance, but I'm just trying to explain, again, this is how you can look at these criteria. Hopefully, that's somewhat helpful.
Dan, it starts to me, um, possibly that one and two are conjunctive, um, because I read the first part of A to say special circumstances are, are these things such that these other things, this practical difficulty would show up, meaning that, the way I'm reading it, you have to find special circumstances, and the special circumstances warrant a finding of practical difficulty under two. Do you see that? Would that be your read, or am I, do you have a different interpretation?
Commissioner Height, Chairman Sharnick, I wouldn't argue with that at all, but the Planning and Development Services Department does have the ability to interpret the code. Uh, the Planning and Development Services Director has the ability, when she needs to, to actually issue formal written interpretations of the code. I think this, the way that the department has interpreted the code is a fair reading of the code. Practical difficulty really appears to me to be a term of art, and it includes things like whether the essential character of the neighborhood would be substantially altered, or whether surrounding properties would suffer a substantial detriment as a result of the variance. Uh, but that's, that's not the first time I've heard that thought. Uh, to be honest, I've had that thought, and I think that while justifiable, the interpretation that the department has come to would be better served, maybe, by making a code amendment at some point.
Commissioner Teta?
Either for Ava, or I'm guessing Don probably knows the answer. Can you enlighten me a little bit about how it is that we came to, uh, adopt this, uh, buffer for breweries, and, you know, what the, uh, what the thought behind that was, since we don't have something like that for restaurants?
Chairman Sharnick, Commissioner Teta, again, as Ava said earlier, the, the reason for the residential protection standard was not necessarily because of the serving of alcohol. It was truly the potential impact of a brewery on the neighborhood. As some people know that go by some of the breweries, there are some times where there's this, what I consider a nice aroma when you drive by, but there's other people that I know that can't stand that kind of an odor or, or, or smell. To them, it's, it's, it's offensive. So some of the concerns with allowing these, which we were, again, the way the regulation was written was written with or without a tasting room. It didn't matter if there was a tasting room, just that a brewery in general, and especially, I think, as you get to be a bigger brewery, you can tend to generate some, what are seen as potential impacts to the adjacent neighborhood. So we were trying to set up a situation where we could evaluate the use based on the specific use in question, and determine whether or not that could go into an area and not negatively impact the adjacent properties. So, we left it open, hoping that if we ran into this kind of situation, the commission could take the testimony, could hear what is being proposed, and make a decision of whether or not mitigating factors, it's okay for this brewery to go into this location adjacent to a residential area. That's what it was. It was not meant to be whether it was, there was drinking involved or not. It was just the brewery aspect itself, the brewing of the beer and the industrial nature, that, as you get larger anyway, you tend to see in a brewery.
Commissioner Fliegh?
So, I think this is a question to Ava. So, if the said application conforms to applicable requirements of the land development code, and this is not a new site plan, are they still required to be cognizant of their lighting onsite, so that it's not drifting past their property line?
Commissioner Fliegh, to my knowledge, and the applicants can, can chime in, to my knowledge, they're not doing any exterior lighting, um, like poles, parking lot lighting, or anything of that nature.
Ava, it's just whatever's required by the planning department.
And again, that was not part of the discussion for the variance.
Yes, that's correct. Not for the residential protection variance. This was, uh, had this not been near the residential, they would have gone straight to a building permit with a site plan. We call it site plan waiver, like a zoning approval.
Okay. But we could, if we thought about it, do something like have it, should they ever decide to put a light in, if there's nothing in the condition in the, um, the permit to limit lighting so that it's not going to invade into, um, adjacent residential areas, they could end up having something that does that.
So Commissioner Fliegh, what you're, I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding what you're suggesting is, so they're not proposing outdoor lighting, parking lot lighting, and so forth, and you're suggesting you'd like to impose a condition in case in the future they want to install? Um, I mean, you can, however, they typically would have to come in for a building permit, uh, to do that, electrical permits, right? And in doing that, typically, the building official or one of the staff will come over to planning and say, "Hey, uh, these guys are putting in parking lot lights," and at that point, we would step in and say, "Well, you need to give us a photometric lighting plan to ensure that, first of all, you have cutoff lights, and secondly, that you're, you know, we need to confirm that your lighting levels don't, uh, go over the lot line and so forth." So, I mean, if, if that's your really big concern, you can certainly condition it, but it's not being asked for at the moment, and it would be something that staff would capture if it came up in the future, I suppose.
Thank you for that further explanation.
Don?
Chairman Sharnick, members of the planning commission, just because we're, we're talking about it, and I don't know that everybody has ever come in and dealt with us on a site plan waiver, so, um, I want to, I want to give you just quick kind of an overview. The way the code is, is written is that the only thing that you can build in Longmont that does not require some kind of review by staff is a single-family home. And the review, then, that occurs is only through building inspection, but no planning, engineering, things like that. But anything else requires some kind of a site plan review, whether that be a site plan, a limited-use site plan, which is a staff-level conditional use review, or a conditional re-use review that the planning commission sees, okay? Now, the way that the code is written is that it says that if the planning, if the planning director finds that the proposed changes to the property are minimal and meet certain review criteria, we can grant what are called site plan waivers, so that we don't require somebody to go out and necessarily have to hire an engineer, an architect, a landscape architect, surveyor, and spend a, a significant sum of money in order to move into an existing building, or even to do a small addition, as long as that addition doesn't exceed a certain percentage of the existing building that's on the property. The goal of that was one, was to try to encourage redevelopment and reuse of some of these buildings in town, without requiring somebody to potentially decide to go elsewhere. So when, when Ava talks about some of the things that you're hearing, many of the site plan reviews that we do are most common, uh, comments that are kind of standing conditions are, lighting needs to be brought up to today's current standard, so if you do not have shielded lights, those need to be shielded. If you do not have any, your handicap parking is not up to snuff, your parking lot's not striped correctly, that needs to be done. Um, if you had an original approval on this property back when the building was originally done, and let's say that it had shown they were going to have a forest of trees out there, but no one has maintained them over the years and they died, they need to bring that back up, because that's how the building originally got built, was by agreeing to do those improvements. So we're just trying to make sure that the main things that cause people grief, that usually get our code enforcement people the calls on, we're trying to take care of those, we're trying to make sure that we get a business in and operating as soon as we can. If it becomes larger than what we can handle with those kind of a review and conditions, then we go through a regular site plan process or a limited-use site plan, depending on how the property is owned, and then we handle it that way and do a similar review to what you do for a conditional use. So I just want to give you an idea. The, the site plan waiver is not necessarily just a, us making a flippant decision. We are, there are things we look at, there are conditions that we place on it, but it is meant to get people in and out in a quick way.
Thank you, Don. Commissioner Pollan?
Okay, I'm going to give my two cents here. Um, this area, when I look at the map and look at that picture, cries out to be revitalized. And given the area that this is in, a brewery does fit into this area. I mean, Left Hand's just over to the west, uh, Whibby and Three Hundred Sons is just over to the east, so it really does kind of fit into that area, so, um, and it'll help revitalize that area. And seeing where the city is going with that area, I think it's a good, good use. Um, there were no complaints. Um, they had, uh, the public was informed three times about this, uh, the surrounding public. I believe at the meeting, there was one couple had questions about the smell, and they were satisfied with, uh, the talk. Um, so that kind of shows me that, you know, nobody's really crying out about, uh, any complaints about this. Um, we talked about the other businesses that could go there. Uh, Ava said, Ava said that there could be other issues. If somebody else wanted to go in there, the same issue could be, because there's other businesses that would have a two hundred and fifty-foot variance. So it could be hard for another business to even just go into that, to that area without a variance. Um, and then, the spirit of the variance, um, I'm going to be more of the spirit and not try to get too technical with, uh, which one comes first, or if one has to be satisfied than the other. I think the spirit is the, as it was explained, um, this particular plot does have an issue because it is so close to the residential. Other businesses would also have this issue, um, and they would also have to come to us for variance. And whether it's a brewery or some other business, to me, I'd like to see that land used and used properly, and I think that this would do good. So I'm going to propose, and we can still debate this, but I'm going to propose that we approve PZR twenty sixteen fifteen B with the following condition, "The applicant shall have satisfied all plan correction requirements of the Development and Review Committee for approval of the associated site plan waiver."
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve PZR twenty sixteen fifteen B. Is there a second?
I second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Fliegh. Um, Commissioner Bruno?
Uh, well, I don't want to break the momentum here or anything, but, um, I just had a quick question for Ava. Um, is, the people that, you know, the houses that are basically being used for residential purposes, but yet are not in a residential zone, the ones directly across the street, uh, they basically don't get any notification, right? They're kind of...
Uh, Commissioner Bruno, that's incorrect. Um, if you are within three hundred feet, so even further than the two hundred and fifty feet, you will get a notice. So, for example, there's a house on the, I guess it would be the northwest corner of Second and Pratt, and they got a notice.
Okay, great.
They're zoned mixed industrial, but they got noticed and so forth.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Goldberg?
Yeah, I think I'm going to jump on Commissioner Pollan's comments here. Uh, first, I, uh, deeply respect Commissioner Height and his attention to the code, and, um, when you bring your perspective, Commissioner Height, it, it challenges me a little bit, uh, in a good way. Um, I wanted to, of course, uh, thank Ava for her work on the project, and our applicants, Leslie and Steve Cazuse. Um, my take on this issue is, um, one of gratitude. I think we're really, really lucky to have this project before us, uh, here in our town, uh, and I think this is part of what we're seeing happen to our town, which is, we have new, exciting development come in, whether it's a mall, whether it's other breweries, neat restaurants on Main, neat shopping opportunities, and I just think we're really lucky to have this type of project, uh, before us. And it's, we don't always have projects before us that really, like, warm our hearts, but this is something where, uh, Steve and Leslie could have gone, uh, to any other town and helped elevate that town with their presence, and, um, here they are sitting before us. So, I appreciate them for that. Um, uh, based off of what Commissioner Pollan said, or as Commissioner Pollan, uh, revealed, uh, this project has met the review criteria for the most part. There is a condition that says that they continue to, to meet that review criteria. Uh, neighbors weren't upset. No, no neighbors voiced any concerns. Um, I do think this is an industrial project in an industrial part of town, and we do have this funny, they're, they're special, they're, they're unusual circumstances, strictly their location within that zone, and so I feel like a, a brewery fits in that area. Maybe, maybe I'm biased to that. Um, so I think with the fact that the seven of us sit here and we care about the future of our town and where we're going, uh, this is a very exciting opportunity for us. I think they'll, um, improve the quality of life for our town, uh, hire local, you know, hire employees. They'll be a po, a positive force of good, and with that, I'll be in support of, um, this motion.
Uh, I have a question for Ava or Don. Um, the, uh, proposed, uh, ten, the tenants will be tenants, not owners. Um, so if the variance is granted, um, and the tenancy changes, because I understand that the ownership is not the Cazuses, the ownership is Red Clay LLC, which is apparently a, a branch of Oscar Blues. Um, if the ownership changes, what happens to the variance? Or not the ownership, I mean, the, the tenancy?
Chair Sharnick, uh, so to answer your question, so if the variance is approved, uh, if you're saying if the tenants move out, if...
Yes, right.
Well, the entitlement runs with the land. However, um, we have an occupancy thing, and so if they were to move out and another brewery did not move in within six months, then they would lose the variance.
Okay, all right. And just to be clear, uh, we are the, uh, final decision-making body on this issue?
That's correct, unless there's an appeal, of course.
Okay, all right, great. Any other, Commissioner Height?
Yeah, just to wrap up my observations, um, I, I agree with my other commissioners that you're a very welcome addition to the city, um, and I don't disagree that this land use opportunity is a well-conceived, welcome addition to this particular area of town. My problem, um, is actually with the process, um, and the code, and the fact that a variance is, in my mind, only in very limited circumstances to be granted, and I'm not at all convinced that because this property sits on the edge... that because this property sits on the edge, that it is not exactly the type of thing that was supposed to be protected against, and that the standards to grant the variance haven't really been shown to my satisfaction.
Any further comments, questions, concerns? Let's take a vote on the motion. Okay, the motion passes six to one with Commissioner Height dissenting. This item now enters a seven-day appeal period. During this time, any aggrieved party may appeal the commission's decision by submitting a written appeal letter stating why the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision should be amended or reversed by City Council. All appeals must be in writing and must be received in the city clerk's office and the planning office within the seven-day appeal period. The appeal period begins Thursday, July 21 at 8:00 a.m. and ends Wednesday, July 27 at 5:00 p.m. Thank you very much, Ava. Thank you to the Cazuses. We appreciate your application, and we will move on to our next part of the meeting. Which is other business, item seven, the Longmont Sustainability Plan, our draft copy, what are we doing with this, Don? Information item only, no discussion?
That's what I understood. I think it was being passed out for the commission to be able to review it, and that was provided by Aaron, and it was a part of the committee, I think, that Commissioner Polan's been, and part of. He might have some additional information for you.
Okay. Commissioner Polan, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, basically, Lisa had asked that we get feedback from the Planning and Zoning Commission on this, and the proper way to do that was for that to be done from the planning department, to come from the planning department to us to be asked, so.
Okay. So basically, if we have comments...
Concerns.
Concerns, ideas, submit them...
To Lisa, and her email address is in the correspondence here.
Okay, very good. I think that's clear. This is a public hearing. This will be the final call for the public invited to be heard. We don't have anybody signed up, do we, Jane? No? Is there anybody in the audience? No, they all left. So I'll close the public invited to be heard. Items from the commission. This is where I have had a discussion with Attorney Kramer since our last meeting, because our last meeting had some interesting procedural issues, such as we had a commissioner called away, we had a commissioner leave the room, we had some questions about recusal and about disclosure. So I thought, since we're in the middle of our year, that this could be a good time for us to kind of review some of the things which, which we do procedurally, and take it away, City Attorney Dan Kramer.
Happy to, Chair Shernick. I agreed with the chair, it made sense. For some of you, it's been a while since we've gone over this kind of thing. Want to make sure it's clear, I'm a resource for you. You can always give me a call, and we can always talk about things like ex parte communications, conflicts of interest, procedural questions, whatever's on your mind. So I want this to be an opportunity for all of you to ask questions. Really, I always come back to ex parte communications because it's one of the easiest problems to encounter, because we're all used to talking to our friends and neighbors. For some of us, the way we get through difficult decisions is by talking with folks. But for a lot of the decisions that come before you, that's something you can't do. And if you have communications with anyone outside of this hearing process, that can affect the legitimacy of the decision that you make on that item. It can affect the perceived legitimacy of the commission itself in the eyes of the public. So I thought it would be helpful to go through some of the basics of ex parte communications. Ex parte communications are just any communications that happen on an issue outside of the hearing process, outside of having the applicant or having the public come before you and state their facts or opinions, and have them on the record. The idea behind forbidding ex parte communications in quasi-judicial decision-making processes is fairness. If you're talking with someone outside of the hearing realm, then someone who disagrees with that person, or might even have information that contradicts what they've said, doesn't have an opportunity to hear their point and respond to it. So it's, it actually comes down to a simple due process concern, a simple, if you're talking about what someone can do with their property or can't do with their property, this can be a constitutional Fifth Amendment concern. In quasi-legislative matters, where you're making recommendations of general policy, that's less of an issue, because you're trying to take the interests of the whole town into consideration and give your thoughts on general policy. You're not talking about any specific person's property interest. And we expect, especially at the council level, but also to a lesser degree at the commission level, that our elected officials are going to need to talk with members of the community in order to determine what the law of the community should be. But for a quasi-judicial, tripping over it, judicial decision, what you have is really something that's a little bit more like a court process, where you're trying to determine rights and obligations between sometimes neighboring property owners, or between the city and its processes, and an applicant. So when you have a conversation, sometimes even without realizing you're doing it at the time, and then you think of it later, oh, I was talking with this person about this item, question arises, what do you do? And if you don't do those things that you should do, what negative effects could happen? One thing that really heals a lot of potential problems is simple disclosure. When the item comes up in front of the commission, you, as soon as the item is called, you can say, I have something to disclose, I had a communication outside the process, and you explain what the communication was, to the best of your memory. Now, if it was particularly long, or particularly central to the dispute, such that there's no real way that anyone can ever erase that from your mind and help you be a fair and impartial decision-maker again, then the only real way to deal with it sometimes is recusal and not hearing or voting on the item. In that case, the right thing to do is definitely not to remain in your chair, it's definitely to not even remain in the room, because your presence in the room could, in theory, affect other commissioners. But instead, not to be in the room for that item. And if you know this is coming, it's really, it is possible to sit for another item on the agenda, but when that item comes up, to have Jane, or to have Joni, or Don know ahead of time, so that they can have an alternate commissioner come and sit for that item. So what happens if you don't do that? Really, in a, in a practical sense, the decision of the commission can be overturned by a court, and my job is to protect against that from happening. So a lot of times, the lines are blurred, it's not really clear whether something's no big deal and you don't even need to disclose, or it's something you should disclose, or it's something for which you should recuse. And I don't want you to have to figure that out on your own. Really, the best thing to do when you have that kind of question is to give me a call, we can talk it through. Sometimes the answer is, ah, no big deal. And sometimes the answer is, eh, that might not seem like a big deal in some perspectives, but check out these other perspectives, you might want to sit this one out. One thing that is easy to skip over and not to realize is an ex parte communication when you're doing it, is a site visit. I don't know how often this comes up for all of you. For some other boards, board members have felt that site visits are really important prior to making a decision, need to see the layout of the property or something like that. I'd really discourage going out and intentionally making a site visit on your own before an item comes before the commission. The reason why is because then you're, you're really using that, I would assume, to help you make a decision on the item. And what you're doing when you're doing that is you're making a decision based on information that's not in the record. The only way we can defend your decision, if it's challenged, is to defend it based on the evidence in the record. And even worse is if a commissioner is explaining something, maybe obliquely, about what they learned on the site visit to the other commissioners, and now everyone's taking part in making a decision based on evidence that's not in the record. That's not what we want. If you ever feel like you need to get on-site, see what's happening at the site, the best way to do that is to use staff as intermediary. That way, everyone has the opportunity to do it, it's prepared in advance, it's a noticed public meeting so that the public is able to attend and see what you're seeing, and they can have that information too, and at the hearing, they can rebut it. And it also helps avoid situations where the property owner says, oh, hey, can I explain anything to you while you're out on-site, just seeing what's going on? So it can lead to further ex parte communications if you're not careful. I'm happy to talk about other things as well. Open meetings law comes up a lot. Open meetings law is pretty simple. Anytime three or more of you are having a conversation about public business, including by email, which includes reply-alls, it has to be a noticed public meeting. And so we can facilitate that in any number of ways, but really, the best place to have conversations is in this space.
Dan, I have a question for you. We have access to the internet through these computers and devices we bring during the meeting. Is it ex parte communication for somebody to, say, access an online map of, of the site in order to maybe find a different satellite view or something than what's in the packet?
Well, that, that's gray area, I'd say. I'd say it's, there are some things you could do on the internet that would very clearly be communication, you know? If you're, if you're messaging someone, obviously. If you're reading a news article, you could argue that that's communication too, because you're hearing things that aren't in the record. Now, a map is different. A map, in theory, is purely factual. You could say it's just, I mean, in another theory, you could say it's not factual at all. But at least in theory, you could say, you're just, you're just looking at the facts there. You could argue it's just another perspective on what staff is already showing you. I'd say if there's a particular kind of image, if there's a particular kind of view that you're not getting from the applicant, that you're not getting from staff, tell us what it is, and we can work on it that way. Really, your decision should be coming from the packet and the information that's described to you here. So help us give you what you need.
Commissioner Goldberg.
Yeah, that's a very, very interesting question, Chairman. I, I am guilty for sure of pulling up Google Maps. I mean, the quality of the image is so great, and you click satellite, and boom, I can see exactly what we're talking about. And I appreciate that question, because here I am, thinking I'm ahead of the game and being real savvy, but actually, perhaps that's in that gray area. So it sounds like we should just request that image in advance if we're not happy with the site plans or with the photography we're getting in the packet.
That would be my preference.
Because there's that little guy that you can like drag onto the street, and then you're like looking at the building. Anyways, before we jump out of ex parte, I have like just a couple of questions relating to recusing and ex parte. Can you recuse yourself after an agenda item has started?
I wouldn't recommend it, but, but if it's not until...
Right.
...the item has started, that it becomes clear to you that you may have a conflict...
Right.
And then you have, you realize, I have a conflict, you need to step down.
Okay.
We did, by the way, have that happen once.
Scott Dunn.
With Scott Dunn.
Yep.
He, he saw somebody in the audience that he recognized, and he...
Right, I recall that. Is recusal strictly voluntary? Can you or Joni or the chairman ask or require someone to step down, or recuse themselves from an agenda item?
I want to pull up the bylaws, Commissioner Goldberg, so I can give you the exact language, but the short answer is, yes, it's strictly voluntary. Only the individual commissioner can make that decision. There's a rule at council that allows the commission, that allows the council member to, at their option, have the council vote on whether they should recuse or not, but I'm not sure that that rule is directly in the commission's bylaws, but in any case, it's up to that individual commissioner. I'm not seeing that vote option in here directly. I don't think that it's precluded by the bylaws either.
There have been occasions when we've had an item before us where maybe a member of the commission lives in the neighborhood or lives near the neighborhood. I guess my question is, can you live in or near the neighborhood of an agenda item and still opt to participate and, and in theory, vote unbiasedly? Or is it your advice that if you're in the hood, maybe that's impossible? Like, can you achieve that type of unbiased behavior if you live in or work in that area that we're discussing?
Commissioner Goldberg, I'd say in general, that's, that's probably fine, that it's just in your neighborhood. Now, if it's your next-door neighbor and it could have an impact on your home value, that's another matter. So conflicts of interest are even more serious than ex parte communications. If you have a personal or private interest in the matter that's coming before the commission, it's very important that you recuse. It's actually a crime to have an undisclosed conflict of interest. We don't want to get anywhere close to that. But, and we do always say, if this is the requirement of the law as to your ethical standards, we want you to be up here. We don't want to be even close. But if it's just in the neighborhood, I think that this is local government, you all are members of this body, in part because of your perspectives on the community, and just being somewhat nearby, the applied for action is, is not enough that you should recuse.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Bruno?
Yeah, I was just curious. You know, I remember when I started in the commission, I was kind of shocked at the whole idea of like, well, you don't want to actually see it? I mean, isn't that, how are you going to, you know, interpret some of these, these things and make a, make a decision? So you were saying that through staff, there can be some sort of a site visit or something? I mean, does that, has, does that ever happen really, or is, you know, as far as with this commission?
Chairman Shernick, Commissioner Bruno. Chairman, Commissioner Bruno. I do not remember the planning commission ever doing it over the last 17 years. But we did do it with the city council for the provenance application up in the northeast corner of Longmont. We actually took, got a bus from the senior center, and we all loaded in, and the attorney read us our rights, and we sat there. And then, when we approached the neighborhood, then I started to kind of walk through some of the items, to try to explain what they had heard from, at one of the public, you know, invited to be heard, some of the issues, so that when John was talking about the median, well, this is where the median would go, that John was talking about. This is the roundabout that they're going to improve and make better. This is where the sign will go. So, that way, based on the things that we had gotten at the public hearing, I could try to help them understand. And then, we got out of the bus, stood out there altogether, got the picture in the newspaper from the Times Call, you know, to show that we were there. And we talked a little bit about what was going on. Now, as I recall, they couldn't ask question, very many questions. It was, there was really some really tight rules on what could be asked. It was more of, staff had a script that we were supposed to go through and present, so that you could see it. And then, once everybody had seen it and came back, so that then, at the public hearing, they could ask questions, people could have gone out and attended that meeting with us, they could also try to counter what was seen out there during that time of the site visit. So, we have done it. And there are some nuances we have to deal with. But we could do that on projects where you feel that that would give you something, you know, because now you're getting your packet a week before the meeting. So, that's, I think, very helpful. Gives you a lot more time to be ready for the meeting. Also gives you that ability to think about, maybe this entails something a little bit more than normal.
Chris, can you?
Not to belabor this unnecessarily, but the distinction I feel like Don is making is one in which, if you made, on your own, a site visit, and you interacted with people at that site, that would be, to me, a whole lot different than just becoming familiar with that, you know, that area, or that part of town, or that particular property. Just, I really can't see how, if, I feel like I'm very familiar with most parts of town, and whether I saw it last week, or I saw it today, because I was aware that there might be something that we might be talking about, about it, as long as you're not interacting with anybody there, I just don't see how it would be any different.
So, Commissioner Shernak, Commissioner Teta, I disagree. And my advice would be that even if you've seen it a bunch of times, I'm not saying, "Swerve out of the way, so you don't see it," like, shield your eyes. But I would advise against going to a site in order to gather information for yourself, on which to base your decision. That's basing your decision on information outside the record. If there's information that you need, then please have us compile that for you. And if you need to have a site visit, in order to really understand the site, let's run that through staff.
Don.
And here's just kind of, it's a weird example, but let me just give you an example. So, if we were going to hear a project on a property that was vacant right now, and all the evidence that we had turned in to us said that there were no prairie dogs on that property, okay, every, all the reports that were done by the wildlife biologists, the site visits when we had been out there, we concur with all of that, and you drive by on the way here, or sometime on the weekend before, and you see a prairie dog out there, okay? You've got evidence now that none of us have, we didn't see it. There's nothing that we have that we can actually look at, but you've got now information that none of the rest of us can even try to address or speak to. And not that anyone would say anything that's not truthful, but I also have no way to know that that prairie dog is out there. I could drive out there again this afternoon, and that prairie dog may still be down in the hole, and I wouldn't see it. So, it could potentially influence your decision, even though there was no, nothing that was meant to. It's, this is just a kind of a weird example, but I just want to let you know that there are things you could see that you may not think about, that could influence you, that the rest of the group would not see. And if they saw it, may impact their decision to vote a different way.
So, Don, what I hear you saying is that, by doing the site visit, you can take in context that doesn't exist in the imagery that's provided in the packet. So, back to Commissioner Bruno's point, I know in the past, I've requested staff to acquire photographs of the site, just, I mean, because it's not exactly really easy for all of us to get together and leave work, and come to a site visit, and find a time that we're all available, et cetera. Staff has been really amenable to acquiring extra images, or going back to the applicant and saying, "Generate, for example, a shade and shadow study," which is one of my favorites. Who's got their?
That's me.
Oh, Bonnie.
Could you just, for every item, have a link to Google Maps in the packet, so that if someone wanted to look at Google Maps, they could? And everyone who reads the packet would have that information? Couldn't you do that?
Councilmember Finley, that's brilliant. You, it doesn't, it doesn't completely alleviate the situation, right? Because Google Maps is not a static image. And, I don't know, I think that, I think that is helpful. I think that that could alleviate a lot of the concern I've had. I don't know if there's any case law to look up on that. I'd say, give me a chance to think about that, and research that. Because in a sense, it does give everyone the same information. Here's the link, there's the image. In Google, though, some of us are going to be dragging our little yellow man into certain places, and we're going to see it from an angle that other people aren't seeing it from. Some of us are going to plug it into, say, the Earth version of Google Maps, which isn't necessarily even a separate app anymore, and see it from, like, above, from, so it's, in one sense, everyone's looking at the same thing, but in another sense, you have infinite images to draw from, just clicking on that one link. So, I don't know, let me think about that.
Commissioner Pollin.
So, Dan, just a couple of things to confirm. On the emails, we should hesitate and probably rarely ever use the reply-all.
Yes.
Okay. Second thing, during our discussions, while we're here, we should probably refrain from, "I've been by there, I live by there, I know this," in our talks amongst ourselves. We should really only always refer to information that is in the packet?
Yes, with, I think, I don't think it's terrible to say, "I live near there, I understand the neighborhood in a certain way." That kind of generalized statement, I don't think you should make it in a way that makes you sound more knowledgeable about it than any other commissioner, but, but things like, "That kind of neighborhood seems appropriate for that kind of thing." That's the reason why you're here, because you understand the neighborhood in that way. So, I don't want to put too many chains around you.
The little nuances keep away from it.
I think so.
Commissioner Bruno.
Kind of forgot what I was going to ask. So, just to confirm, a site visit involves everybody on the commission?
Everybody on the commission, Commissioner Bruno would at least be invited.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Hight.
Yeah, Commissioner Pollin's observation is exactly what I wanted to raise, because it happened twice in our just concluded meeting, which is, I had an observation about what I knew about that particular corner. And I think Chairman Shernak had an observation about what he knew about the landlord. Are those appropriate to disclose? Or, I mean, again, at one level, we're brought to this commission because we have certain familiarities with the neighborhood, neighborhoods. In other instances, there, I mean, I guess we're not supposed to do additional homework either, which is what I'm really gathering from this, is, don't go too far outside what was presented, because it's a quasi-judicial action, and we're limited to the record. And the record is what has been presented to us. But we also have judicial knowledge of certain things, so I'm asking you for a bright line, but you probably can't give us one, can you?
Commissioner Hight, I couldn't have said it better myself. One of the concerns that I had in having this conversation was that you all would want to investigate the gray areas, and see if you could find a bright line. And you're absolutely right, there is not a bright line. You've identified the two countervailing interests happening here. We want you, for your knowledge and your expertise, to make the best decision for the community, and we expect you all to act like quasi-judges, and not like quasi-legislators, based on, based simply on what you know about the community. So, I think that's exactly right, and I don't have any better way to put it than that.
Commissioner Hight, could you turn off your microphone?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Flay.
Dan, we've had this conversation before about site visits, as I recall. And I didn't ask the question that I'm going to ask now. So, directly upon leaving here, we should re-crank ourself with every street in the entire city, so that we don't have to drive by anything ever again. Correct?
Correct.
That's your bright light.
Commissioner Teta.
Dan, just one last thing. Would it be fair to say that if we somehow had individually acquired some particular additional information that we considered relevant, it would be appropriate to get it included into the factual record for everyone? Is that...
If there is, like, an email, or some other information that comes your way, the appropriate thing to do would be to deliver it to staff, who can then send it to everyone. Yes.
Commissioner Goldberg.
Right. Dan, you haven't discussed at all, like, when we are approached about an agenda item from the public. Would you mind just touching up on how we should handle those situations, when someone has an opinion about an issue, or is just having a coffee, you know, in the parking lot, and wants to talk about something? What's the best way we can handle that?
Easiest way, Commissioner Goldberg, would be to blame me. City Attorney's Office told me I can't talk about that. If you keep talking to me, I might not be able to vote on the item.
Right.
Just a quick follow-up to that. Are you saying, Dan, we should not even listen?
Commissioner Teta, yes.
Anything more you want to add, Dan? This has been very helpful, by the way. Thank you.
Happy to do it. We're not going to get through the whole world of ethics and process. Call me if you have questions. I also want to thank Don for the prairie dog example. Don's a lot better with examples than I am.
And, Dan, I gotta just give people a very quick summary of what we discussed in terms of procedure, and with commissioners needing to, say, leave the table. If they stay in the room, I'm generally going to continue, unless we're right at a vote. I'm going to call you back to your seat. If you leave the room, perhaps, before you leave, you know, motion to me, or, you know, flag me that, hey, we should perhaps take a recess instead, take a break. And in some cases, it's an emergency, and you're called away, and, you know, that's totally understood. We have families, we have loved ones, and, you know, I, if we're in the middle of an item, given what Dan has said about seating alternates, we would not seat an alternate in the middle of an item. Instead, we would wait perhaps for the next item, but we might even not seat the alternate at that time either. But we can plan ahead if it's not an emergency. So, is that a fair summary of that email discussion we had?
I think so.
Okay, great. So, because all those things came up in last month's meeting, we had those things occur. And fortunately, generally, we handled it correctly. Yay.
Commissioner Goldberg.
I just wanted to say, for those who haven't taken advantage, or seeked advice from Dan, I have found Dan to be wildly supportive, and perhaps reassuring, and quite responsive, you know? Within minutes or hours, I'm typically relieved, or at least, kind of set on a direction to choose. So, thanks for your responsiveness, Dan.
Anything further, Dan?
No, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is items from the council representative, Bonnie Finley.
I have nothing to say.
Thank you. Items from the principal planner, Don Burchett.
Again, just want to echo that if there is additional information that you would like us to be including in the packet, even if it's after a meeting, like tonight, that you say, "Don, you know what? This really would have helped us with the decision." We would like to know, because we want to make sure that we're giving you the information that you need to make that decision, and not put you in a position where you have to go out and find additional information yourself. So, there's things we can do, we just need to know what they are, so we can try to incorporate those in there for you. Okay? So, thank you.
Thank you, Don. Is anybody opposed to adjournment? Seeing none opposed, we are adjourned.